We'll call the City Council regular meeting to order for Monday, January 6, 2025. We will start with item 2-1, which is our swearing-in ceremony.
Okay, and Joshua, if you can join me up front. For the oath.
Good morning. I am Steve Wilson, Doosaw, I swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge duties of man.
That I will faithfully and partially discharge duties of man.
In accordance with the law, and best, into the best of my judgment and ability.
In accordance with the law, and to the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I am Steve Wilson, Doosaw, I swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of councilmember.
That I will faithfully and partially discharge the duties of councilmember.
In accordance with the law, and to the best of my judgment and ability.
In accordance with the law, and to the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
Hi, Jake Cordis, Doosaw, I swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and partially discharge duties of councilmember.
And that I will faithfully and partially discharge the duties of councilmember.
In accordance with the law, and to the best of my judgment and ability.
In accordance with the law, and to the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
All right. We'll do the pledge of allegiance at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please use.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Lean.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
All right, any changes to the agenda?
None.
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 All right. Unless there's any changes, I'd seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Jake, second by Steve, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, we'll go to item 6-1 on our announcements and commendations, which is Dakota County update from District 1 County Commissioner Mike Slavik. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, those in the audience, and of course those watching on, some sort, watching at home. Happy New Year to all of you, and congratulations to those re-elected and newly-elected. It's, having worked with all of you in some sort of elected office over the last number of years, it's, I certainly look forward to continuing that good work in 2025. So congratulations on that. I was last here in May, giving kind of an update as I try to come about twice a year. Unfortunately, with some schedule conflicts, was not able to come at the end of 2024. So I'm here today to kind of just do a recap of 2024 and just kind of a looking ahead for 2025. Just want to start with saying when I was here last, I think I shared with all of you that our county manager announced his retirement, and we, so Matt Smith did retire in May. He was our county manager of an eight-year time, almost a 40-year career in government. And he did retire this past May. We went through a very lengthy process to find the next county manager for Dakota County, and we hired this past summer Dr. Heidi Welsh. She was the county administrator for Olmsted County down in Rochester most recently. And prior to that, she had actually worked for Dakota County for 13 years in various roles. So we have been very fortunate to have her. We are seeing some pretty impressive things in that time. Our, your city administrator has had opportunity to have some of those meetings already as we're working on continuing to build our relationships with our city counties, other county and state partners with that. So that's been really great and successful with that. And we're seeing some pretty dramatic changes in a very positive way just in the short three months that Dr. Welsh has been at Dakota County. Couple things kind of going back into 2024, you know, it was about a year ago at this point, we were having an open house related to some potential concepts for a trail and some pedestrian safety on Pilot Knob. We do know that that is still some of the safety issues as Pilot Knob is continuing to be a faster thoroughfare within the city of Farmington. However, I think there was waiting, there's some potential development that might drive some of what that might look like. So I think we have some, some good feedback from the community as well as some good preliminary design, but I think we're waiting to see what, what may come across in the coming years. It still is in a five-year capital improvement plan, but it's not in an immediate improvement on there. The second thing, just wanted, I think most of the council was at present, we've had an amazing partnership with the Dakota County Community Development Agency, and we had our groundbreaking this past August with the Denmark Trail workforce townhouses. So this is actually going to be one of the, the first concepts that is like this. And we've had, this will, I think, be our 22nd housing townhouse development that we've had throughout Dakota County. But this is the first one that is actually incorporating one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom units. So we've seen a great demand for individuals who may not necessarily have the family, but there is some workforce, just to give you reference, you must have a job and meet a certain income threshold to be able to live in this community. But, but it's, it is at a lower rent than what it would be for a normal market rate rent. And we've seen a lot of those individuals without families, as well as those with larger families that have kind of been a gap within Dakota County. And rather than do a whole separate building of just efficiencies in one-bedrooms or lot of larger four-bedroom and larger units, we actually are blending that into one development. It's the first time that we've done that, and we hope it will be successful. We've actually opened up a Farmington-only for this development waitlist. So a lot of our developments that are more in the southern part of the county don't have as large of a waitlist as other parts in there. And one thing that we've tried, and it's been a very, very successful pilot, has been we opened it up last summer for a Farmington for people who only want to go and live, work in the Farmington area. So we will have a official ribbon cutting for that in 2025, and we will be, this fall, we'll be filling, before the school year, intend to fill all of those units. And the waitlist is, is larger than the units that we have available. So that is a great success story on that. Another good success story in a partnership that we've been able to do with the city of Farmington is the North Creek Greenway. The city has been working and taking over a portion of the city trail as part of a 200-mile vision that will actually go and take the maintenance and repairs and of the, of a current city trail system throughout all of Dakota County on a 200-mile system that will actually be, in this part in the North Creek Greenway area, connecting Apple Valley, Lakeville, and Farmington, ultimately getting down into Rambling River Park. And then that will be allowed to go into a, an additional Vermillion River Greenway that will go all the way to Whitetail Woods. So, so part of the system in here that we're working on, we were able to go in and bring that portion of the trail up to county standards in 2024. And through working on our maintenance agreement, that will be a cost savings to the residents of Farmington as that portion of the trail will not be the responsibility of the residents of Dakota, and businesses of Dakota, of Farmington, but instead of all of Dakota County as part of a regional system. So we're excited for that, and I know there's actually about miles of, of, in that vision that go through parts of, of the city of Farmington that will be able to connect Farmington throughout the entire county. So we're looking forward to that partnership continuing. And as a county board, we're just about 40 miles of that 200-mile Greenway vision. So we have a long ways to go, and I know the county board has been looking at using some of, of the sales tax resources that we have to continue to make that a priority that ends up being a good partnership with our communities and cities to save taxpayer dollars, but it also makes a high quality of life that we know our residents all want, want to be able to experience. Another partnership that we did in 2024, which has been wildly successful, has been having a centralized absentee system. I know that, prior to that with the absentee and how elections go, every city did it their own way. And one of the ways that we were able to have is one centralized county absentee ballot board. And that, that, that was not something that I think everybody was on board with, but it has ended up turning out better than, I'm sure your staff will attest to that. Many of them have actually reached out to us that have said, this turned out to be a pretty good thing. I know we, we want to make sure that we still keep the elections local. And, and that's why you're, I don't ever see that happening at a county level to do full countywide, but I think this is truly more of a partnership that added cost savings with that. The last thing that I will share was at the end of 2024, and will be, the public comment is still open on looking at some of those trail and pedestrian safety issues on Denmark and part of, I think County Road 76, that is. So that is actually open till the end of this week for a public comment. And there, I think there's only about two or three comments. It hasn't had a significant engagement, but we know that our county roads are getting busier with heavier traffic, and we see that on Elm, we see that on Ash, we see that on Pilot Knob. And finding ways, and particularly ways to cross over or under as we have the pedestrian side there is one of the objectives that we want to be able to do an appropriate study, and then when the dollars are available, fulfill with that. Moving on to 2025, you know, there is, this is, for us as a county board today, you all swore in your newly-elected's. Tomorrow, the Dakota County Board will be swearing in our newly-elected's who are all re-elected. So our Dakota County Board will look the same in 2025 as it did in 2024. Chrisers, Hayman, Roland, Droste, and Workman all were re-elected in 2024. So the seven of us will stay on the board next, this coming year. We go and, our theme for 2025 is really, we're in it together, we can't do this alone. And we really believe, as a county board, that one of our strategic priorities is to go in and expand on our partnerships with our cities, with our townships, with our schools, and with our state and federal partners. And, and one of the parts that we have not been there is also with our business community. So we, we've got a number of strategic objectives that we are working on that we're looking forward to kind of talking about. One of the first ones is coming up at the end of January, where we, you know, we're receiving a letter probably this week, I imagine, to the city administrator, asking for two of your councilmembers or mayor to be able to attend a county-wide government affairs conversation up in West St. Paul to kind of talk about our legislative priorities, but also how we can work together as all levels of government with our state partners. So that is, that is coming up. We tried a pilot of that in 2024, and we're looking to expand upon that in 2025. So that's one of our objectives, in addition to all the fun stuff that we do every year as you do, in terms of budgets and, and whatever hot topics might come up that you don't exactly know about. But we're really looking forward to working together in 2025. And I just want to, once again, thank you for the partnerships that we've had with, with, your city staff have been great to work with at both my level and at the, at the county staff level and all of you. I, I look forward to continuing the work we've done so far.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nick?
No questions, I just want to return the gratitude. It takes a lot of time, obviously, for you to make these, you're all the time. So I appreciate all the feedback and the transparency and the updates.
Thank you.
No questions for me, just happy to see you again and excited for what this coming year has, and grateful you're back.
Steve?
Yeah, Mike, you, you really do just an amazing job, you know, in being our partner. But I think more than that, you are frequently at different events that are going around the community. You know, you're just there as if you're kind of one of us, even though I believe you live in Hastings, so. And then we, you know, I think as Nick alluded to, you live in, you know, you have to cover all the different townships. So just really appreciate all your support of our community, so thank you.
Jake?
I just want to echo what my peers said, thank you for coming tonight, Mike. I look forward to working with you again over the next few years.
I'll, I'll add on top of all of that. You, at least in my time, I'm going to speak on that, is you have absolutely been an advocate for Farmington. You show up to events, you patron businesses, you work with us as an elected body, taking nothing away from your peers because we see a lot of them doing the same. But you truly do advocate on behalf of the residents. And it might, it might not register with the average resident when they hear something like, the county is going to take over a section of path, right? But to put that into context, cost sharing over the years has been 55-45, 85-15. That smaller percentage sits on the backs of the residents and the businesses of Farmington. And when the county takes that off, it alleviates that burden, albeit to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars annually, but it puts it on the rest of the county. Because we know that our residents are out amongst Dakota County, spending their money, doing the things, and it's, it's a way to help bring that money back to the community. And, and I, I don't want to lose the gravity of that. That is a big deal. When, when the county talks about wanting to partner with us on Rambling River Park and turning it into a trailhead. And the constant effort that you and your peers put forward to help benefit Farmington does not go unnoticed, and it is extremely appreciated. I just, I, I couldn't ask for a, for a better commissioner to represent our community, and you show up only every day. So thank you for everything that you do.
Well, I will add, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers and staff, thank you very much for the nice comments. And, but we're certainly, certainly in it together with that. And then I will lastly say, if there are, you know, these are good happy times, but you know, not everything that we do is always in, in those moments. So if there are any, anyone watching, you all know how to get ahold of me if there are issues. But for residents or business owners, my contact information is on the county website, but also feel free to email me, Facebook me, or, or call my office if you do have any questions, comments, or compliments with that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is citizen comments. If there's anyone wanting to speak at this time, please come up to the podium. And as a reminder for those wishing to speak, citizen comments is a time for anyone to address the City Council on matters not on the agenda. Those speaking shall state their name and address and limit their comments to five minutes. The City Council will not engage in discussion on your topic, but those issues requiring a response will be responded to by the next City Council meeting. Go ahead.
David Pritzloff, 20255 Aiken Road. Welcome, Councilmember Cordis.
Thank you.
Mayor Hoyt, Councilmember Wilson, for being a councilmember. And again, I ask all of you to govern to the best of your ability, as was, as was in your swearing-in deal. We've got some pictures that I want you to take a look at. We've had, I don't know if he's going to focus that in or not. We had one snow, we've gone through this numerous times. That's obviously my property on Aiken Road. Once and all, a plow has to plow over two feet on the my property and take the sod off. This is ridiculous. Obviously, some snow melt has, has happened, but you, you'll be able to see in one of these pictures, looking backwards, that the wind plow is two feet onto my property. Before my mailbox, you'll see that it's not even on the edge of the road. On 203rd Street, I'll show you a picture, you're not even going up to the curb. But you sure like screwing up the hell out of my property. I'm going to ask the council and staff to, I don't know if you're doing this purposely because you're being called out sometimes by me on certain, on certain issues, but it certainly is very egregious as to how far they went onto my property, what we've been fighting with for over years on this. That's looking, that's looking back.
Can you turn that 90 degrees, Dave, so it's up and down? The, the other way.
The other way. There you go, thank you.
That's looking back at it, obviously it's some, some snow melt, but you can see how far that plow has plowed onto my grass. You got a bill for it one, once before, you're going to get another bill for it in the spring. All I ask, and I've said this before, do you want people in this community to take care of their properties and make it look presentable for, for people? I try to do that. There's chunks of sod from my property into my neighbor's property that I'll have to clean up this spring. Like I say, this is very sick. 203rd Street, just around the, just on the corner. Obviously, some melt's gone on, but you can see there, you haven't even been within two feet of the curb. One property, you want to go, you want to go two feet onto the property, the next one, you want to go, stay two feet away from it. You know, one of these pictures. I believe it's that one right there. See, if you look up before my mailbox, you're right on the edge of the road. What is it? You guys, you have something with me or what? This is, obviously it seems intentional, and I think you need to direct staff to tell people that, hey, you might have got your butts handed to you when I did this project, but leave me alone. I won't have to come here and do this. All I want is a decent lot, decent property. I've been commented on, on when I put Halloween stuff up, Christmas stuff up. Like I say, I'll reiterate, you want people to make it look decent on their properties? I try. You want it to look like shit, I'll try to do that too, if you want. I'm on a main thoroughfare, just try to do what's best for myself and people that go by my place. I ask you one more time, govern to the best of your ability, and tell staff to knock this shit off. I'm sick of it. You'll get a bill in the spring for me to fix this.
David, are you going to stay until after the meeting?
Sure, I can.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our next item. Item 8, which is the consent agenda. I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Holly, second by Steve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item 9-1. This item is a public hearing for the petition to vacate a portion of a drainage and utility easement within Lot 4, Block 2, Sapphire Lake, Third Edition, 2688 213th Street West. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. So the city has received a petition from Eternity Homes to vacate a portion of a drainage and utility easement within Lot 4, Block 2, Sapphire Lake, Third Edition, addressed as 2688 213th Street West. So Eternity Homes has constructed a foundation for a single-family house on this lot, and has later realized that a small portion of the garage encroaches into the easterly side 10-foot drainage utility easement by two feet. So instead of removing the foundation, they're requesting that this two-foot portion be vacated, and so that it can, the garage can remain out of easement. As you see up here on the screen, in the dotted red line, is a 10-foot easement line, and this little portion here encroaches about two feet within that easement. Engineering and planning staff have no concerns with this minor encroachment and are okay with the proposed easement vacation. And so per Minnesota statutes, the City Council must conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed vacation after published and posted notice of said vacation. And so as on this survey here, this is the two-foot easement outline here in the hatched red area that would be vacated. So it's that two-foot strip all along that easement. So the actual request for you guys tonight is after taking any public comment, close the public hearing and adopt Resolution 2025-06, vacating a portion of a drainage utility easement within Lot 4, Block 2, Sapphire Lake, Third Edition.
Thank you, sir. Steve, any questions for Jared?
Yeah, Jared, I actually do have one. So the grading plan for this, for this plat is going to be adjusted a little bit to acknowledge the fact that the easement, because I mean, obviously, there's a lot next to it. So I mean, there has to be a grading adjustment, right?
Not that I am aware of. John, if you want to comment on that.
Wasn't there sometime, I mean, there's, there's usually some kind of a grade from property to property along with the, I mean, that's part of the easement itself, isn't it?
Yep, Mayor and property owners, there is a drainage and utility easement along the common lot line, but based on a two-foot encroachment on the side lot line, it's not going to impact the grades, except right at that location where that corner's intruding. So it's not going to be pushing flow onto the neighboring property or anything like that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comment? No? Nick, questions? Holly? Jake?
No questions.
I guess my question is more for our attorney. If, if this variance or vacation is approved, does this create a precedent or a situation where, whether it's this builder or any other builder unknowingly does the same thing that we are, in essence, required to approve based on prior decision in a similar instance, or even a homeowner from saying, I want to build an oversized shed, or I want to put it there because it lines up. You've done this, so now you need to do this for me too.
Mr. Mayor, no, you aren't creating a precedent. It's actually quite common, these things happen either inadvertently or sometimes intentionally, unfortunately. But each, each instance would be handled on a case, case-by-case basis. A variance is different than a vacation, and this is a vacation. So this is just clear, basically on paper, taking away part of the city's interest in that small sliver of, of the easement. The city will still be able to use the rest of the easement for its original purpose. And it doesn't create a precedent that you're obligated to follow in the future.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I don't have any other questions or statements for you, Jared. Is the applicant present?
No, I believe no rep was here tonight.
Okay. Since the applicant's not here, are there any residents? Because it is a public hearing, anyone that would like to speak on the matter? So that we can get it on the record, I'd prefer you come to the podium, please. If you could just state your name, please.
Bob Richardson. I just had a question, I mean, this happens, but how does it happen? I mean, I used to work for Dakota County Parks in current technology, online surveying and GPS surveying. I mean, the trails and roadways are within GPS is a foot, I mean, inches mostly. I mean, if it happens, you have to kind of allow it. But, I mean, I live in the older part of town. Back then, our, most of our garages and stuff are in, are, are in city alley easement, if technically, but they're grandfathered in. And then we had a neighbor, that twin home on First and Elm. You guys, that, that was old duplex, and he had the variance to shift it over to our property to, or closer to our property, make it legal. And we, we deal with that every time, and we, we got a 40-foot building, our driveway is in the ice, and, and that house, I mean, you got to put some thought into this when you do these houses. I mean, that house was put in there, all is mechanicals, or four feet from our- I mean, that house was put in there, all his mechanicals, or four feet from our kitchen went, or four feet from our property line, but, I mean, I mean, this is a slight technical, technical, you know, issue, but, I mean, all these big developments, and then, because it could, I mean, a developer could sneak this in and get into a county right-of-way or a utility easement that has, you know, in the future, this one probably wouldn't be affected, but in the future, if he's three feet off, then you gotta run a gas line or fiber optic in there, you know? They're there for a reason, and like our county boulevard on County Fifty is, our property goes to back sidewalk, we maintain it. I mean, our, our boulevard has, you can't get another utility in there, I mean, but this was just a minor thing, but with the technology, I mean, this was a minor problem, but like you said, I mean, somebody might ask to add six feet on their garage and encroach into the, like, the setbacks and stuff, and then you might open the door to some trouble in the future, but just a thought.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It, it brings up a good question, and actually, I'll add to that, Jared. How did this happen? I mean, presumably, it was surveyed, right? It was pre-graded. They came out and they dug it, and the builder set the footings in the wrong spot and didn't catch it until after the foundation walls were poured, or what, what happened?
So the survey submitted showed a five-foot drainage utility easement, and so turning, they put in the foundation and realized it's a ten-foot easement and came back to the city with the vaca, with the vacation proposal.
Okay.
Can I actually ask a question related to that? Is it just for the purpose of consistency that you would do a two-foot vacation along the entire property line rather than angling it only to accommodate for that front corner?
Correct. The rationale behind that is to avoid any future issues down the, down the line with that specific two-feet encroachment on the property in general.
Okay.
All right. Again, it is a public hearing. Any other residents in attendance wanting to speak? All right, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing at this time. Any other questions, deliberations, Steve? Jake? Holly or Nick?
Nope.
No? Okay. Let's be formal here. Get the verbiage. Then I will seek a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five, Tag Zero Six, vacating a portion of a drainage and utility easement within Lot Four, Block Two, Sapphire Lake Third Edition.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nick?
Second.
Second by Jake. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Yes.
Councilmember Cordis.
Yes.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Yes.
All right, our next item on the agenda is item thirteen, thirteen, Tag One, designation of acting mayor for twenty-twenty-five. Shirley?
According to the council's bylaws, at the first meeting of the year, you need to choose an acting mayor who will perform as, perform the duties of the mayor during disability or absence of the mayor from the city. I'd like to make a correction to the report in the council packet. Councilmember Cordis is beginning his first year of term. Councilmember Bernatz is beginning her third year. Councilmember Lean is beginning his third year, not his fourth. Councilmember Wilson is beginning his first year of this term, not his fifth. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear first. Per the bylaws, in an odd-numbered year, the member serving the third year of term who received the most votes when elected would be the acting mayor. Councilmember Bernatz, serving her third year of term, was elected in twenty-twenty-two and received the most votes at the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two general election.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments? All right. Then I would seek a motion to approve the appointment of Councilmember Holly Bernatz as acting mayor for twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Nick. Second by Steve. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cordis.
Yes.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Yes.
Slight hesitation there. Next item on the agenda is thirteen, Tag Two, which is the resolution approving twenty-two-five city council committee appointments.
At our work session tonight, we discussed this item and amended Resolution twenty-two-five-oh-five with members appointed to public agencies. Those are for Air Lake Airport Advisory Commission, Holly Bernatz as primary, Jake Cordis as alternate, Elf Ambulance, Apple Valley, Lakeville Farmington, Steve Wilson as primary, Nick Lean as alternate, Dakota nine-one-one Board of Directors, Nick Lean as primary, Steve Wilson as alternate, Empire Farmington Planning Advisory Commission, or Committee, sorry, Joshua Hoyt as primary, Jake Cordis as alternate, Eureka Farmington Planning Advisory Committee, Holly Bernatz as primary, Joshua Hoyt as alternate, Farmington Castle Rock Discussion Group, Joshua Hoyt as primary, Steve Wilson as alternate, Fire Relief Board, Steve Wilson as primary, Jake Cordis as alternate, Liquor Operations Committee, Jake Cordis as primary, Nick Lean as alternate, Metropolitan Urban Service Area Review Committee, Holly Bernatz as primary, Nick Lean as alternate.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments, questions, concerns? All right, looks good. Seeing none, I would seek a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five, Tag Zero Five, approving the appointments to council committees for twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Jake, second by Holly. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Yes.
Councilmember Cordis.
Yes.
All right. Wrong table. You get to start.
I get to start. I know there's a lot of pressure to give a report about Bison, but I did a little searching and didn't find anything new to report on that, so I decided to do, in lieu of anything happening at the legislature or other legal significant news, I decided to find a little Farmington fun fact that maybe all of you know because you live here and because I don't and I'm new here. It was new to me, and I thought it was very interesting that Farmington was one of the first communities in the United States to offer free rural mail delivery in eighteen-ninety-seven.
Wow.
I thought that was a fun fact.
I like that you know that now.
So, that's my report for the day.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick?
I hope everyone had a good holiday, and congratulations to Steve and Jake and Josh. Little bit of change for me, but I guess I've known all of you for a long time now, so looking forward to the next couple of years.
Thanks, sir. Holly?
Yeah, Happy New Year, everybody. Congratulations, gentlemen. Glad to have you back and glad to have you here. And actually, the thing that I wanna talk about is something that came up in our neighborhood in conversation over the holiday, which is the abundance of dead waterfowl on certain bodies of water in the Farmington and actually throughout the entire southern Minnesota area. If you live by a body of water right now in Farmington and you are looking out and you see an above-average amount of dead geese or swans, unfortunately, on your water, please contact the Minnesota DNR. They are aware of this as a situation. They believe it to be some sort of bird flu. They're encouraging that residents do not handle the waterfowl on their own, but rather to let DNR come out and remove them, and the expectation is now that the ice is stable and we've had some cold weather, that they'll be able to do that in the coming weeks. So just be mindful of that. If it's something that's affecting you, let the DNR know, and they'll come out and take care of it for you.
Keep your dogs away.
Keep your dogs away, yeah. Keep your dogs away, keep your kids away if they like pond hockey. Don't go out there and think that you're gonna, you know, start yanking on the geese on your own and pull them out. It's just better to let people that know how to handle this, handle this, because there's a whole process on how they're disposing of them as well in order to prevent. And if you think it's not a big deal, just remember that there are scavenger animals and scavenger birds, particularly bald eagles that like to feed on this, and we, we, they, the DNR, would like to see that, you know, no one else, and nothing else gets sick, so that's that.
Thank you, ma'am. Jake?
Again, Happy New Year to everybody. I really look forward to this opportunity. Just a few thank-yous. Thank you to the community for giving me this, this amazing opportunity to serve Farmington over the next four years. Thank you to my peers and, and city staff for meeting with me over the last couple of months to get me up to speed and get me ready to do the job on day one. And thank you to my family and friends who came out tonight to encourage me on night one, but specifically, thank you to my wife, Bridget, and my son, Oliver, for staying out past their bedtimes till the end of the meeting and for your encouragement, your support during the campaign and then over the next four years.
Thank you, sir. Steve?
Thank you, Jake. I, too, would like to thank the community for their vote of support. It was really almost a blur in time back to November, because my dad passed away just a couple of days after the election. It actually kind of a neat moment for me because I was able to, he wasn't lucid or aware of what was going on, but I got to see the election results right as I was sitting bedside with him, so kind of a neat memory, so thank you, Farmington community, for your support. I do wanna congratulate, obviously, the mayor and Jake, too. You know, the one, I do wanna make a comment about Jake. Jake probably spent, you go, twelve to fourteen months, maybe longer, attending every single city meeting, workshop, you know, and he is super involved in the community, as we all know, so I just wanna commend you, Jake, because, you know, there is a lot to know. I know that we have another former council member in the audience tonight, too. There's a lot to know when you serve in this role, and the good news is, you get to learn, you know, throughout the entire time that you're on the, on the council, so it is very rewarding in that way. I also wanted to, we always have a lot of good stuff on the consent agenda, and I think every single week we see donations from individuals that go towards the Rambling River Center. I did wanna call out Finch and Daisy, though. They had a really generous donation. Their donation, you know, is something that they wanted to give. It doesn't take anything away from any other donation, but I know that Finch and Daisy in particular does so many good things through the Rotary and this donation as well, and there's so many donors to the Rambling River Center that all of you, small or large, is greatly appreciated, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Lynn?
Welcome back, Mayor and Wilson, Councilmember Wilson, and welcome, Jake Cordis. We're excited to start working with you on the dais, so. Just want to let everybody know that our regular scheduled meeting for council is January twentieth, but we'll be changing it to the January twenty-first in observance of Martin Luther King Day. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Shirley?
I don't have anything other than I'm really happy to be back. Thank you.
We're happy to have you back. Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to talk about a collaboration that we're kicking off this year. We are collaborating with DCTC to do a business survey, and will be, all of our businesses in town should be getting an invitation to take the survey. We really want to hear from our businesses. We'll be having an event in February that they'll be invited to, and we're calling it Building a Stronger Future Together, the Farmington Business Summit. So if you're a local business, please look out for that survey link request coming from DCTC. Again, this is a collaboration that we're excited about, that the college is excited about. Please participate in that and look for the invitation to attend this upcoming summit. That's all I have. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The, I wanna highlight one of the items also on the consent agenda. We continue to implement our EAB management plan, so tonight you awarded a contract for removing two-hundred-and-sixteen ash trees and other hundred-and-two ash tree stumps where the trees were taken out as a public safety measure before the stumps could be taken out, and we continue to get very competitive prices. We had six responsive bidders on this contract, and we're very happy to see that we're getting strong interest even as we continue with these large contracts for removals.
Thank you. Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, outdoor rinks and warming houses officially opened. As you know, we have warming houses at both Disted Rink and at Rambling River Park behind Dodge Middle School, and then we flood a pleasure rink at Farmington Elementary School, so warming houses are open for the season now. Sunday, the Sons of the American Legion Omelet Breakfast at the VFW is for the Rambling River Center. That breakfast is from eight AM till noon, so if you're not busy on Sunday morning, like I said, the proceeds from that go to the Rambling River Center. And then on Sunday, January nineteenth, is smores and more at Rambling River Park from two to four at the warming house. We'll have music, ice skating, hot chocolate, and smores, so come out and join us on that particular day. Thank you.
Thank you. Kemp?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Only the first full week in January, and already we have our auditors on site. They, we're here today, we'll be here tomorrow to begin the review of twenty-twenty-four data, and then we'll be back in March thirty-first to finish up with our fieldwork.
Thank you. Chief?
January thirteenth, we begin the process of hiring for our paid-on call. Look at the website, be all over our social media for all of our informational open houses that we will have, and then in March, we will close, and then we'll begin the process of interviews and go down that with the start date of July.
Thank you. Chief?
I have nothing tonight, sir. All right, okay. Taking a page out of the city attorney's book. I'll come up with a fun Farmington fact off the top of my head. How about that? Everybody's favorite chip dip or potato topping, Top of the Tater? Made right here in Farmington. Right here, in Farmington.
Good factoid. And I think, I think the, the top has been removed from the container about this summer's event. It has become public now, right? I've seen some publication about it going out. So what we know as Mountain Dew Days, which has had multiple names over the years, has the Dew Days Committee has partnered with Kemp's, and this year's event will be called Top of the Tater Days. So it'll be supportive of a local business who has national recognition, and I'm sure there will be crazy things like how much Top of the Tater can you eat over a period of time and baked potato type. I'm sure there will be many themed things around the event, but, you know, we, we used to drink a lot of Mountain Dew, and there was that, and then it, things changed, and now it's Top of the Tater Day, so I think that's a big win. From what, from what I hear, their marketing team and their communications team will be doing a lot of work helping promote the event, so.
We have a mascot, too, I think.
There's a whole lot of things, but yeah, all good stuff. You gonna add something, Nick?
I was just gonna correct you for public record that it's Top of the Tater, not Top of the Tater.
Oh.
Top of the Tater, I'm sorry. We, we're official around here, so. No, congratulations, Jake. Congratulations, Steve. Both long-term servants of the community, both longstanding residents, I have no doubt that you will both continue to serve the community, its residents and its businesses in the best way possible. I, I look forward to everything that twenty-five has in store. Twenty-four was, a former city administrator and I were having a light conversation outside and said, wow, time flies, and it does. It was just six years ago that I raised my hand and, standing right over there, and asked to be a part of this crazy ride that is representing your community. And there's a lot of things, when you initially raise your hand, that you believe happen or you believe you have some level of involvement with, and you quickly realize how much you actually don't have a say in a lot of things, and your purview becomes very narrow, and you rely on your team and the staff that is the team of the city of Farmington to, to go out and execute the work. And earlier this year, I was asked a lot earlier in twenty-four, I was asked a lot of times, like, why would you continue to do it? Like, in light of all of the people that show up and tell you what you're not doing, all the bad decisions that you make and all the things, there are those who don't show up to meetings, who go out of their way because they, they support you, but they don't wanna be pulled into the masses that are openly criticized and drug through the social media vitriol that does exist. And I think when it really hit me was when my fourteen-year-old son came home with some profanities that were laced at him by a schoolmate. And I know that these thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids don't come up with this stuff on their own, it comes from their parents. And I think that's a, that says more about the state of society than it does about the city of Farmington. And if we, as a society, are going to be better, we individually have to be better, every one of us. And that starts with me. I need to be a better representative for the city of Farmington. I need to be more positive. I need to be more positive in all areas. Showing up and doing the work isn't just part of the job, it's the responsibility of the job. But you do it knowing that you are constantly subject to criticism, and you're constantly subject to the naysayers and the, "You're not doing this right," or "It could be done better." This, we have made it our goal, and we have put it in as our pillar a little over four and a half years ago, that we are transparent. Trust me, there is nobody sitting on their doorstep waiting for FedEx or UPS to show up with envelopes with money in it. I think you watch a little bit too much of the national news to believe that that stuff actually exists in the city of Farmington, because they don't show up to my doorstep. And I know they're not showing up to my peers' doorsteps. Each one of us has raised our hand, has stepped forward to serve this community, and we do it knowing that anybody at any time can come up and criticize us and say whatever it is that they want, because it's their home, too. And we're here to try and do the best that we can with the information that we have in front of us, and for some people, it's never going to be enough. But for the rest of the community and the majority that we interact with on a daily basis, we're here to serve. And I don't think there's any question that either myself or my peers do that in every situation possible. So, for those that continue to support, I say thank you. For those that have not and believe otherwise, we'll continue to show you that we have Farmington's best interests at heart, and we will continue to make decisions on behalf of the betterment of the majority of the residents of this community and move us forward to a time where this city can continue to thrive and we can be proud of the things that we're doing, even if we disagree with how it looks like. With that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven-fifty-one PM.
Motion by Jake?
Second.
Second by Holly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at seven-fifty-one.